This conference will now be recorded.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for joining us tonight. Welcome to the September 28th, 2021 Tenino City Council Work Session. My camera doesn't seem to be turning on tonight, so I'm sorry. You're not going to get to see my pretty face, but you can hear me talk. We don't necessarily have anything on the work session, but we have some agenda items that we could bring up and we could also do our reports. So we'll use our time wisely. Former State Representative Beth Doleo offered to join us tonight since the stuff dealing with the home fund was a bill that she wrote while she was working in the legislature. And it's something coming up on, in all throughout Thurston County. And I can only, I can only answer so much. So I figured there might be some questions and there is no better person to get them from. So she will be joining us tonight, however, she was going to donate blood or plasma or both. So she's going to join us when she's done and hopefully there's still enough blood and plasma left in her body to be able to get the brain to function. So we'll have to tease her about that when she's on here. And I don't think I violated any HIPAA laws telling that because I'm not her healthcare provider. Any, any wannabe attorneys out there? So we can, we can begin. I'd rather talk about that when she's here because I think there are some interesting points to consider and some things for us to talk about. But what's that, John?
You bet.
Yeah, but we can, we can just go right into some of our reports and maybe she'll get here before the end of the work session. So I do not see. Oh, and then Rachel's not joining us because she is feeling under the weather. She said a child sneezed in her face at, when she was at work. So there's that. Is there a member of the Chamber of Commerce? Is George with us to provide a report?
Not yet.
Okay. Fire District 12.
Uh, we're going through the same kind of stuff that everybody else through the, that the state is with this, with this argument over the HIPAA rules and who needs to get vaccinated and who doesn't need to get vaccinated. This is just, nobody has clear definition exactly what it is, except that if you don't have at least your first round of shots by a particular day.
October 8th.
Yeah, if you don't have the first shot by at least then, you are probably going to be out of a job. At present, the last I heard, there was over 55,000 people that are suing the state over this.
I don't think, I don't, it's not 55,000.
That's what I heard anyway.
No, there's, there was a lawsuit filed in Walla Walla that was, it was, it was like 500, I think. It was, it was a large number.
Okay, but whatever the number is, there's, there's at least one suit being, being filed against the governor for his lack of flexibility on this. I mean, if you come right down to it, it, to me, it's a very big insult to everybody that's been working since day one of this, of this whole thing. And now all of a sudden, we're, we're being tossed aside. We spent our time out there. I am considered one of the essential employees and I was out there with everybody, just like everybody else is. And now we're being tossed aside and saying, well, you're not important anymore. If you don't get this, you don't have a job. So this is not going to be good. We found a way to protect our guys, the ones that don't want to take the shot for whatever reason. So we'll be the, our guys will be okay. I know some of them have decided to go ahead and take the shots. Some of them still haven't done that. They have some time. We also were doing something for our volunteers. And if we can pull this off, we'll be the first one in the state to do it. And this is to help with retention. It's, we're going to set up a fund and have it set aside. And we'll figure out exactly what the buy-in part will be. It won't cost the volunteers anything, but the longevity. They have to stay with the department for a certain amount of time and the money that we put in there, plus any interest, when they do leave, for whatever reason, they'll be able to get that money back. And the, the whole idea is that to keep people with the department a little bit longer, especially on a volunteer basis. But if they don't stay long enough, that's money that just gets rolled over to the next volunteer. So it's, it's almost one of those type of things. Once it gets started, it's going to be pretty good for them and it's not going to cost the department a whole heck of a lot of money to start with. Or if somebody does, is able to take advantage of that, it won't be a whole lot to have to replace the, replace monies with.
Okay. All right, thank you, John.
Thank you.
I see that the former Representative Beth Doleo has joined us and I thank her for joining us. So I'm just going to open that up and she can kind of, she can brief us on what the home fund is and what the proposal is that we're looking at. And you know, what, what that means to Tenino, what Tenino could do. And like I said, she was the sponsor of the bill. I believe she wrote the bill, so we're pretty lucky to be able to get it right from the horse's mouth. Everybody's just hopeful that you didn't give too much blood that you don't have enough to go to your brain and be able to explain.
I know. Well, today, so.
Did they give you your cookies?
I did, I got my cookie and my potato chips.
There you go.
Thank you.
Well, great. It was just fortuitous. I was reaching out to Mayor Fournier today to just check in about this because I know the county is considering it. And he said you were having a work session tonight and that I could join along and answer any questions that you might have. So, so in 2020, after the city of Olympia had taken this measure to the ballot and it passed overwhelmingly, and I had seen that sort of happen. That happened in 2017 and it took about three years to, to wage a campaign to, you know, pass this measure. And considering the state of crises that our communities are experiencing across the state, I, I thought it would be good to offer cities a funding tool that they could enact councilmanically if they so chose. And so the, basically the bill, it's House Bill 1590, does allow for a council manic vote to increase the sales tax one-tenth of 1% and create an ongoing, Home Fund is what we call it in Olympia in this community. It's called different things in other communities, but, and it provides an ongoing locally controlled source of funding that municipalities can use to support housing, the capital, the operations and maintenance and the services. So it's a very flexible tool. It is, you can buy land with it. That was changed in last session. You can also purchase existing buildings and renovate those to become supportive housing. Couple of sidebars on it. It does have to provide housing for people at the 60% area median income and below. And at least 60% of the funds that are raised need to go towards housing. The other 40% can or cannot, it's, it's up to municipalities and how they want to use it, can also support behavioral health, chemical dependency, that kind of thing. So prior to this bill passing, the cities of Ellensburg and Port Angeles, Anacortes and Olympia passed it to the ballot. And since then, the city of Spokane, East Wenatchee and Wenatchee, Tacoma, the King County area, Waukam County, the city of Vancouver, they've all passed it councilmanically. I think I'm forgetting a few. A number of other communities are in the process of the same thing that our community is looking at. Does this make sense for our community? And as you know, the county commissioners have requested, you know, to, to hear from people from throughout the county. And so I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, let's go ahead and get started. I'll start it off. It says here on the, on the, the letter that we've gotten from the county that Thurston County is looking at implementing a countywide home fund, accepting Olympia because they've already passed that. From what you were saying, it was a city by city. So I'm not sure if we're talking apples to apples over here.
Yeah, so, so it, the county is considering doing it. And it, and if, and the county does by statute have the ability to implement it countywide, which would impact Tenino, which is why they're asking for your support, cities can also do it. In fact, you have the option of doing this yourself and, you know, maintaining complete control over, over the dollars that come in. I did take a look at that today when, when the mayor and I were talking. It looks like you, you would generate somewhere in the neighborhood between 30 and 40,000 if you took this action separate from the county. You would need to do that before they do it, if they do in fact do it, in order for that to, to, in order for you to maintain control of those funds. So it is this apples to apples.
Okay, so is there a way for, for Tenino not to do this? And if the county does, for us to opt out? Because when you look at, when you look at North County compared to South County, that's including Yum, because Yum had a problem about three years ago and they took care of it on their own. They didn't get any help from anybody else. They, they got, they got whatever they did, they did in-house, period. Okay? Tenino, Bucota, Rainier, we have no, no ability to do anything with what's happening in Olympia. You're at the Capitol, you could look out the window and you can actually see down by the lake and that's just one of them. We didn't have anything to do with that, not one bit. We didn't have a say whether they could stay there or whether they had to move. So why are we being expected to say yes to something like this?
Well, there are many reasons that we have a homeless crisis. And you know, it's, it's not just the people who are, you know, housing programs and throughout the region don't just address the folks that you see down at the lake. We have like 800 kids in this county that are considered McKinney Vento kids, meaning that they have unstable homes. So, but we want to be able to have the resources to interact with those families who are, you know, falling off the luck, you know, lost their job and kids are moving around from sofa to sofa or are, you know, sleeping in their parents' car. And, you know, intervene with that so that they don't end up on the streets and we don't continue to create the problem that, that you see and that, you know, that is so hard to, to deal with. So it's not just about that particular issue of the encampments that we see. The problem is much deeper. You know that the, the housing is very unaffordable. It's very challenging. Someone who's trying, I just was on a phone with someone who does chemical dependency work. And they were like, yeah, some people come in, we do the treatment with them and then they don't have a place to go when we discharge them. And, and yet they're really making an effort at getting clean and sober and yet they don't have a home to go to and it makes it very challenging to stay with the regime that they have just been through with the treatment. So I think there's, and then there's our veterans, you know? I, I am also on the board of Quixote Communities and we just opened a 35-unit tiny house project in Ordin, Washington that is housing 35 previously unhoused veterans. And I, I think as a community, together we can do better in making sure that our veterans and our families have options that they don't currently have with the housing shortage and, and, and all the issues that we are dealing with, COVID, all that stuff right now, the pandemic. And so that, this, this will help to do that and it will also help to provide the services that folks need to get themselves up off their feet and open a new chapter in their lives.
See, I, I would have to disagree with you with respect. Just a little background, for the last year and a half, almost two years, I have been out every night working with homeless. The children that you say that are out there, I don't see them. What I do see is a bunch of people that have chosen to live, and I'm not talking about just by the lake. It's throughout Thurston County and where the major, major clusters are, are in North Thurston County. All the groups that you just mentioned right there, those are, those are completely different groups of people. They need different types of help and they can be helped. But, but by lumping them all into just this one little thing right here and then having to split that pie up all the, with all those different groups, you're not going to be able to help anybody, but you'll be taking a whole lot of tax dollars away from a city like Tenino because like, as you said, 30, maybe $40,000 a year.
Beth's not taking any money from us. Let's, I mean, so like, you know, keep it general, like Beth is not taking any money from us. Beth is here to share information with us and she understands the issue on a lot of different angles. So I did just.
So do I.
Okay, I know, I know, I know. But just when you throw out the "use", you know, I know, maybe it's a Jersey thing, but.
It's a Jersey thing.
You're taking all the money.
Bear with me on it.
Continue.
So bear with me on that. One of the biggest things, Beth, you and I met a couple of times over the last few years through the Transportation Policy Board. One of the things that we did about 20 some odd years ago was a vision reality. One of the main things that we looked at was housing, affordable housing. The problem isn't so much affordable housing, it's a, it's how to afford to build housing. If you buy, buy up, if we take that money and we buy up properties to rehabilitate them, that's even more expensive. I know because in my youth, I used to do a lot of that stuff. I won't tell you what they used to call the, the remodel guys. But it, it, once you open up that wall, any estimate that you thought was there is just right out the window because you don't see the problem that, that the house has until you open that wall.
Is this a metaphor or are you being literal? I don't, I kind of stopped listening.
I'm being literal. Once you open up a wall on, on a remodel, most of the time, you don't know what's behind that wall. So your estimate is a guess. So when you're talking about affordable housing, how are you going to make affordable housing without reducing a lot of the barriers that builders have? And we, we came up with this 20 some odd years ago with a vision of reality and it hasn't changed one little bit because prices go up year in and year out. And the only way that something can be built is if something can be paid for.
I, I do think that there's some issues with our building codes, but that's, I, I, you know, that's a different issue. I mean, yes, when we're talking about affordable housing, but we're not going to solve that right now. I think just practically speaking, the, the county and Lacey and Olympia and Tumwater are pushing very hard for more investments to be made in affordable housing. They're asking, they're, and this is going on in other negotiations, that South County give up 50% of the CDBG funds and that it be put into affordable housing projects. They're asking that the home, this home fund tax be, well, they want to know, they want to know what we think. And that there, there are options, but what they put on the table was, give us a letter of support or tell us you don't like it and essentially. And, but they can count, pass through a councilmatic vote. So just the commissioners can vote, a majority of them to make this, what did you say? What is it, a 1% of?
One-tenth of 1%.
One-tenth of 1% that would go on countywide. I, I think it's going to happen. I think it's inevitable. I don't think that a letter from Tenino saying that anything that you said, John, is going to matter. You know, this is an issue for them and they, they want to, they want to create these, these funds. However, and I really appreciate Beth propering this, is that in that bill, it does allow for Tenino to do their own thing. We have the, the lowest sales tax around. So 1% on our sales tax is nothing. It, if, if, you know, maybe, maybe neither of, you know, it's like, what do you? You know, when you're faced with the choice of let them throw it upon us or, you know, carve out our own and have our own locally managed home fund, I think that that's a better alternative for us. And that's something that, where we could create our own home fund, we could use it for different projects in the community, housing rehab. There, there's all, you know, we can, we can get crazy and come up with all kinds of ideas. But, you know, we could also collect it and may, I don't know, maybe in the future we join in. If we, if a different council values a countywide approach. But my sense is that this council does not like the countywide approach. And that, you know, so it is, I think it's cool that there is an alternative.
Well, if you, you guys probably don't remember, but about two years ago, I brought this up and I warned that the county was going to try to pass a vote so that everybody in Thurston County was going to pay for the homeless problems in North County. Well, here it is. I think it's a bad idea. Tenino, Bucota, Rainier, we didn't have anything to do with what's happening in North County. We, what we did do was try to warn, I know I did, because you could see it coming down from Seattle. I went up to Seattle about five years ago. It was nice, it was pretty, it was worth going to. A year later, you had people saw, living up underneath the, underneath the bridges. And within one year, now it's considered up there to, and they call it a homeless, the homeless industrial market, where you got a whole lot of people that are making a whole lot of money and nothing's getting any better.
Well, and if we, if we, if we do create our own home fund, we're not going to be create, we're not going to be contributing to the military industrial complex of homelessness or, you know, whatever that was. But, but, you know, I, I do think that our peers and our colleagues throughout the county would appreciate us creating, you know, some type of effort to work on affordable housing issues. There is no doubt that there are people moving into Thurston County and there, there probably is some opportunity for us to do things better here housing-wise. Where there's vacant land that could be purchased and there could, and you could work with a group like Habitat for, to build a house there. There's, that, that's absolutely appropriate, I think.
Let me jump in there on the Habitat thing. I've talked to a lot of people through Habitat and Chief, since he's on the board, he can go ahead and verify this. Even to build a Habitat house with all the free stuff that they get, they're still looking at 100 and a half, $200,000 for one of those houses. Just the taxes alone, that, just the taxes on that house alone will remove a whole lot of people that could have taken advantage of Habitat. The taxes take them back out of it because they can't afford really taxes on it.
I'm not here to solve the homelessness issue or have the housing crisis. All you guys need to understand.
If you don't look at what the problems are, we're never going to be able to solve.
No, I know, but right now, I want you guys to understand that I believe the county is going to force a sales tax on us and then that money will go into county coffers for what they want it to go to. Or we can pass an ordinance and we can collect our own sales tax and keep it in our own coffers and then Tenino can choose its flavor.
Or here's another option. North Thurston County gets a whole lot of sales tax out of South Thurston County because that's where the majority of shopping is. North Thurston County can leave South Thurston County alone. Then the cities that are here, the towns and the cities that are here can decide whether they want to take, one of the, where they, they want to enact something like this because they think it's a true need.
You can try to fight that battle, you know it's not going to work.
Or just leave that money in the, in the, our residents' pockets.
I'm, I'm just trying to be practical. If, I mean, okay, every, you know, you can, you can plant your feet in the mud and you can say, no, 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 I don't like this and then just get rolled over. Or we can, you know, we can take it upon ourselves and control. That's, that's what I see as the options. I, I think if you do, if you do nothing or you choose a, a strategy that is not going to win, then you're just choosing to, to lose.
I don't, that's a Kafka, that's called a Kafka trap. And I don't, I don't agree with that assumption. Because I'm not saying that we don't do something. At this present point, we have some homeless coming in, but they don't stay here very long because we don't have services for them. All the services that they want are in North County. Tenino, Rainier and Bucota do pay a whole lot in sales tax in North County that gets overlooked. And we've been told this time and time again, since I've been on council since 96, well, that money doesn't really count. Well, yeah, it does. We pay a whole lot. So if North Thurston County wants to go ahead and put this in, let them put this in. In Olympia, whenever I have to shop in Olympia, I'm paying into that because of a sales tax.
So you're, you're just, you're saying, let them, let them do the, John O'Callahan says, let them pass their, the county commissioners, let them pass their councilmatic vote for the home fund. That is your position. I got it.
For North Thurston.
I don't have another option. Tenino has an option to write a letter of protest. They also have a letter, they can write a letter of support. They can also choose to enact their own and, and subvert the effort and then they retain, they retain the ability to use those funds as Tenino needs. Those are the options.
It's a Kafka trap.
Does anybody else have any comments or questions? While we have Beth here.
Thanks for being here, Beth. I appreciate it.
Yeah, you bet. Let me, is there a way? I'm not terribly familiar with go-to meeting, but I'm happy to put my email address in if you have any questions. Is there a way to, is there a chat? There is. I'm going to put my email address in.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Chief Hutchings, you, you raise your hand.
I didn't want to rip your mane. I was just wondering from Councilmember O'Callaghan. I've never heard that term before, Kafka trap. Can you, can you spell Kafka for me and tell me what it is?
I'm just learning about it myself over the last few months. Basically what it is, the easiest way to explain it is, well, if you don't do this, this is what's going to happen. So you got to do this, okay? You have two options that are both bad, then you got to pick from one of the, one of them. For example, instead of, and all of Thurston County has to do this or just Tenino. That's a Kafka trap because we don't have to do this. We've got plenty of time here in South County to go over the issues and figure out exactly what we need to do. First and foremost, I believe, is to follow the laws that were on the books way before any of this other stuff was there. Okay? Way before we started to say that, okay, you guys can stay here and we'll provide porta potties and this, that and the other. We had laws and those laws did not allow what we see now to perpetrate. We're a small community. We don't have resources that we can give like North Thurston does with all the, you know, food and clothing and when it gets really, really cold, where they, they can go in and have someplace to get out of the cold. We don't have that ability. We don't have those, those funds. And when somebody does come down here, they may spend, it's, it's, correct me if I'm wrong. They may spend a few days here, but they leave because they can't get anything. They don't get food and all this other stuff that North County gives them.
The Kafka trap is, is like a false logic.
Yes.
Like all cats die, Socrates died, he must be a cat.
That's it. That's a Kafka trap.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
You're on mute.
Hello. Well, I, I just wanted to say that I like the option of having our own money, keeping it here in Tenino. I, for one, am going to go to the public hearing on October 19th and I'm taking someone with me from a business here in Tenino that's interested in this. We certainly do, we don't need to, we just don't need to be supporting the whole county. I agree with John in some ways that we, but, but I do think that we should try to do something here in Tenino as, as our, as a council here in Tenino.
Okay, all right. It's 7:30. I really appreciate Ms. Doleo coming and joining us. You can stay for the rest of the meeting. It's going to be action-packed. Or you can take off if you will and feel free to join us anytime. It's always a pleasure.
All right, great. Well, thanks so much. I really enjoyed the conversation and please don't hesitate to reach out. And it's very nice to see you, Commissioner Hutchings. I miss you. I hope you're doing well. So take care.
All right, thank you, Beth. All right, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Tuesday, September 28th, 2021 Tenino City Council Meeting. Let the record show that all council members are present with the exception of Rachel Davidson, who's feeling under the weather and will need to excuse tonight. Want to cruise up there around? Uh, want to cruise up there on the agenda there? Jen. Uh, I'm going to call the word, call the order. Everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God. All right. Thank you. Uh, we have an agenda before needing approval with the addition of the excuse of Councilmember Davidson.
Mr. Mayor, before we get started, may I say something?
Yes, sir.
I want to apologize for dominating that discussion. Uh, it's just something that's near and dear to me. Thank you.
Absolutely. No, your, your, your passion is appreciated most of the time. 90%. I'll give you 90%.
Move approval of the agenda as presented.
Okay, thank you. We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion passes. Thank you. Uh, that brings us to approval of the minutes for the September 14th, 2021 Tenino City Council Meeting.
I'm moved.
Second.
Second.
Seconded to approve the meeting minutes as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That brings us to the consent calendar. This is the consent calendar consisting of September 15th, 2021 through September 28th, 2021. Claims checks number 30138 through 30159 for a grand total of $94,863.34. Uh, no liquor cannabis license removals, renewals and excusal of Councilmember Rachel Davidson.
More approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Uh, we have no executive session. That brings us to presentations. We have none of those. Uh, we have no public hearings or proclamations.
Public comments?
We may. Is there anyone in the public that would like to provide comment at this time? Please speak up, state your name and address. You'll be given three minutes. Is there anyone in the public that would like to provide comment at this time? Going once, going twice, hearing none? Moving on. That brings us to old business and new business, uh, home fund discussion. So we had a.
Ding ding round two.
Yeah. We had a lively discussion in the work session. Uh, the county has sent us a letter. Dear Mayor Fournier, during the 2019 legislative session, House Bill 1590 was passed into law, provided county legislative authorities with the option in addition to a ballot measure to impose by council medic action, so without a vote of the people, uh, which we know that Councilmember O'Callahan loves those, an additional 0.1% sales in use tax for housing and related services, a home fund. A minimum of 60% of revenues collected must be used for constructing affordable housing and facilities, providing housing-related services, constructing mental and behavioral health-related facilities, or funding the operations and maintenance costs of newly constructed affordable housing. Facilities providing housing-related services, evaluation and treatment centers. The affordable housing and facilities provided, providing housing-related programs may only serve the following individuals with low, with income below 60% of area median income, which is most everybody in Tenino. Uh, individuals with mental illness, veterans, senior citizens, homeless families and children, unaccompanied homeless youth, persons with disabilities or domestic violence victims. The remainder of the monies collected must be used for operation, delivery or evaluation of mental and behavioral health treatment programs and services or housing-related services. Board of County Commissioners is considering the option of implementing a countywide home fund, accepting the city of Olympia because they already have their own home fund. And I, I think Beth told me they've built like 300 homes in Olympia through their home fund. And it is set a public hearing for October 19th at 3:00 PM or as soon as after the matter may be heard to hear from the public about this option. Further, the Board of County Commissioners would like to hear from your city about this proposal and request that you send a letter by no later than October 19th outlining your position related to the implementation of a countywide fund. I, I, and this is from the county. I, I found it interesting that they did not mention that we could establish our own home fund. Uh, and I think, I think it was, it was really nice of Beth to be able to point that out to us because I'm not going to read House Bill 1590, 2019. Uh, but the, the options that I, as I see it is, uh, either we accept that they're going to do this, and I think they will regardless of writing them a nice letter, a nasty letter, uh, kicking and screaming, no matter what, I think the, the county and the North County cities are, are very committed to doing this and they've got their, their own reasons. Uh, but our options are either we uh, accept that they're going to create the, the countywide home fund tax or we, knowing that they're going to do it and they would be taking our money out of our community. And then there would be, it would be the Board of County Commissioners deciding what is best to do with it. And we have never successfully competed with, uh, North County interests for home dollars. We are never successful at. There's, as John, uh, Callahan stated, there is a, there is a well-oiled machine in the, in the north of Thurston County that, that speaks for these dollars. And we are not going to be competitive in getting those. So we could, uh, choose the option of establishing our own home fund off of our 1% uh, sales and use tax. It comes down to about 30 to $40,000 a year. Can't build a lot of houses with that, but you can, you can accumulate over time. You can use it for rehabilitation projects, weatherization projects. You could use it to, uh, do things for the, the senior apartments. Uh, they're constant, you know, this quite often that they would contact us because they've got lighting issues or they've got all kinds. There are things that we can do in our own way to support affordable housing in Tenino that can look how Tenino wants it to look if we choose that route. And I, I really do think, you know, you, you either choose to accept that the county is going to pass this tax and they're going to take the money, or we can speak for, we can keep it in our own community and do these things listed in that paragraph to the best of our ability. Those, those to me are the options.
Yeah.
Well, I think, do we, oh, go ahead, Jason.
Go ahead, Jason.
I was just going to say, I, I feel where John is coming from and because I agree with a lot of things that he was saying in that, in our work session. But also I, I don't think we should just sit back and do nothing. It's unfortunate, but I think we should come up with our own, like you were saying, Mayor, and go that route.
Yeah. The fact is our sales tax is absolutely low and that's, that's the way we keep it and that's what, so this would, it would have very little effect. And the thing about putting, increasing sales taxes, it's not just our community members that we are then gathering, uh, tax revenue from. We have a lot of people that, and I, I, you know, I feel the same way about roads. I, I do absolutely support uh, creating a transportation benefit district based on the 1% sales tax increase. Because then you're, you're capturing everybody that comes in and the money, the residents of Skookumchuck or McIntosh come in and spend and you're using some of their support to support our roads while they're using our roads to get there. So I, you know, I do think that there's, it is unfair that just our citizens support our roads and just our citizens support our police department while the surrounding, uh, community gets, gets to use them for their protection and their transportation. Uh, so when you do attack the sales tax, it, it's, it's, I think it's more fair than say property taxes. So I mean, there, if there's a, you know, glass half full statement. Linda, did you have something?
I'm, I'm thinking we have one more meeting before the 19th. I believe it's October 12th. Is that our next meeting? And I would, I would say we should, um, uh, pass an ordinance allowing us to set up our own home fund.
Okay. Any other comments from the council?
I would, I was just, just say that I hope people go out to the public hearing on October 19th and voice their opinions and concerns.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember O'Callahan?
Okay. Uh, years ago, it seems to me that the state came up with a taxing mechanism. For example, what you're talking about, uh, right now, if we pass our own, plus the county passes their own. Every time somebody from Tenino goes to Olympia Lacy or Tom Water, we're paying that sales tax plus our own sales tax. If there's, and I think there's a way, I remember for sure that we can.
No, that, John, that's not correct. You would be paying our sales tax when you're in the borders of Tenino. When you're Olympia, you pay Olympia, it's like 10%. When you're in Tenino, you pay like 7.4.
You're missing the point. Okay? If, when we go to, uh, to North County, we're paying their sales tax. We are giving them our, some of our money because we are shopping there. If you enact something here, we will be paying a sales tax in Tenino separately from the county, meaning North County. So when we go to North County to spend some money, we're also paying for their home programs. So we're paying for the programs twice. I believe, is it, let me finish.
It doesn't work that way.
There's a way that we can recoup the money that we spend in North County to use down here. I don't remember for sure, but I believe that was passed about 10, 12 years ago. Linda, do you remember something along those lines? You were there.
The only thing I remember is that a destination, the tax, a destination tax, if you're ordering something online. But I do not remember that. No, I don't remember any bill or any legislation that had to do with us recouping sales tax if we go to the store in Olympia to buy something that, that just because you live in Tenino doesn't mean that that you would get, no, no, I don't.
That, that doesn't work. A destination tax, if you buy, if you buy something, like you go buy a hot tub, Olympia hot tub, and you have it delivered to your house, you can pay Tenino taxes and you can save a lot of money. Same with a car. If you go and buy a car at a car lot and you go and finance it down at the OB Credit Union, you can, you can say that you're taking delivery in Tenino and pay Tenino taxes and then the Tenino, and then the taxes go to Tenino coffers too. But John, you're not paying twice. When you're up in Olympia, you're paying into their programs. When you're in Tenino, you pay into Tenino's programs. That's, but it doesn't mean you're paying twice. It means you're paying for where you're at.
Yeah, you are paying for where you're at.
I think that's, that's what John was talking about, what you just said. If you buy something and it's delivered to your house, you pay the tax in Tenino. Yeah, and that, yeah, and I do, I do remember that.
This is what I was talking about. It was called, if I remember correctly, it was called a tax equalization. And what it was supposed to do is if one jurisdiction had a tax that another jurisdiction had the same thing on, uh, you could, you could collect the sales tax from the other jurisdiction to be put back into your coffers. I may be wrong, but I believe that's what happened about 10, 12 years ago. I'd have, we'd have to take a look at it.
Okay. So that, that bottom line, you know, I think we've got, those are our options. That, that bill, we've got, we will have plenty of room for what we want to do with those funds. So really, really, I, I think just speaking practically, not, you know, you know, not ideologically or anything like that, just practically speaking, our choices are to keep the money at home and we decide how we, uh, work on those problems and support what we want to support here. Or, uh, we just stay passive and we, and it's siphoned off and it goes into the county coffers and they decide. So, uh, John, Councilmember O'Callahan, please, if there is something about equalization or some, do, help us out, do some research, get us the information, help us figure that out if you find it and think it's uh, germane and helpable, help, helpful. Uh, beyond that, if, if there's a, if there's a council member that wants to pass a, make a motion to uh, direct staff to begin drafting an ordinance to develop a home fund tax.
Not me.
Feel free.
Yeah. So move. I would like, uh, the, uh, staff to write an ordinance.
I'll second it, Linda.
Okay, it is moved and seconded to authorize staff or direct staff to, uh, draft an ordinance to establish a home fund based on House Bill 1590. Is there any discussion?
I think we, because it wasn't put up for, uh, uh, a vote for tonight. We can make the consensus to say, go ahead and write something up, but to vote and say yes is a whole different thing. Because it wasn't.
You guys, you guys are, you can vote to direct staff to do something. Uh, and then if it's an ordinance, it, we'd have a public hearing. We would have, uh, two to three meetings where it's discussed. And, uh, and there would be ample opportunity to, uh, pass it, not pass it, change it, uh, destroy it, you know, there, there's, this is not, this is not a final thing. This, this allows us to put it on the table for real.
We don't, I think that's a. That, and, uh, we, we passed an ordinance quite some time ago and you were very instrumental and vocal on that of not passing anything the night that it's presented. And this is presented tonight. We can go ahead and agree to have something written that's not saying that we're voting yes or no for anything. We're just saying, let's see what we, we can have written. Okay? So in other words, we're just giving consensus. We are not taking a vote on this.
Okay.
Yeah, I want to make it clear too, that we're not passing anything, John. We're just making sure City Hall can write something up.
Yeah, that's what I just said.
Yeah, which I can direct them to do, or you guys can direct them to do through, uh, through a vote. Or, uh, just point and click. I, I don't, whatever, whatever your flavor is. I just want to keep moving.
Well, it's, it sounds like you have a consensus to have something written up. Uh, one, one last thing.
I also have a motion on the floor. So if, unless somebody withdraws their second or withdraws the motion, uh, if there's no further discussion, uh, I will call for a vote.
Aye.
All those in favor of directing staff to draft an ordinance?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
We can see what's there.
Okay. Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you for cooperating, everyone. I know that this is a, this is a contentious issue, but we'll, we'll work through it and we'll come up with the, whatever's best for our community. Uh, next.
What last thing, Wayne?
Sir.
Uh, you keep bringing up that Tenino has the lowest, uh, sales tax in Thurston County. Do you know why?
Is it something you did?
Yes, it is.
I knew it. Moving on. Find a different soapbox, John.
Okay.
What'd you do? 20 years ago, IT bust this, flying cars. Okay. All right. You've, you've had enough mic time. We're, we're moving on. Uh, this, I have too much fun right now. Uh, no resolutions, no ordinances. Reports, uh, George Sharp, are you with us? You want to do the chamber report?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. The Chamber of Commerce is working with Tenino Arts in partnership with the Tenino School District, the library, the Tenino Garden Club to put on a scarecrow competition of coloring contests and also a fine arts showcase. And the information can be found at teninoarts.org. Also, the coloring contest form can be picked up at the school district, at the different schools or at the library. And the scarecrow contest form can be found on that website, teninorarts.org or it can be picked up at the Tenino Library or the Ironworks Boutique. The deadlines are October 16th to enter the contest and there are going to be prizes including $21 wooden script as first place, $10 and $5 good certificates to a chamber member of their choice. And that's the main things for that. Then our next Tenino Chamber meeting will be October 20th. It will be in person at the Kodiak Room at noon. That will be our candidate's forum. That's the main things for the chamber.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is the EDC? Okay, thank you. Uh, does the EDC have a report?
Did you, were you able to attend the meeting Wednesday?
No, I was at work.
Okay, no, I don't have any other thing to report for them.
Okay, uh, museum?
No, no report.
Okay, Tenino Community Service-
They've gone back to their regular fall hours, fall winter hours, which is Friday and Saturdays from noon to four.
Okay, uh, Tenino Community Service Center. Jody, thanks for joining.
We've got a little couple of things. And with the scuttlebutt that went on earlier this evening, this just opens that up. So we are seeing an uptake with our seniors needing help. Um, and so this home fund, I think, is something that Tenino needs to really look at for the seniors. Um, and it's not just the seniors in the apartment buildings. The seniors are seeing a huge increase in their rents in Tenino. And we are stepping in to help them, um, kept feet, keep fed and to keep their fur babies fed. And so we just, you know, just so that you know, we are seeing, we are seeing it within the Tenino Community Service Center a little bit differently than those of you that are sitting on council. Um, and so I will be an advocate for those seniors that have no other means of getting more, um, income because they are a senior. And then having a two hundred dollar rent increase. And they have no other place to go because there is no other housing. So, uh, but just, just so you know, we're getting the, we're, we're starting to see some larger numbers um, with our seniors within the community and not just at the apartment complexes, okay?
I, I, I really appreciate your, uh, your comments. And, and yeah, I, I think, uh, you're, you're right that we can look at, you know, we, if we do do this, that there, you know, there are, there are lots of opportunities for us to help our residents. And, uh, and you, you know, you know that better than any of us. And so, yeah, please, that kind of, that kind of information, that kind of feedback is critical. And there, you know, we will have to study what is allowed by law with those funds. But I, I, I do believe, and, uh, Chief Hutchings, who's familiar with it, is telling me that it is, it is very broad. What is, is used, what those monies can be used for. And there's a, there's a lot of work that we have done with the food bank in this past year and a half, uh, using city resources and federal funds that have really brought them up to a, a higher level of service. And, uh, and so, you know, there, there is work that can be done here. So it's not, you know, it's not a bad thing.
No, and I, and mostly it's that I would like to bring, um, the awareness. Because these are the folks that are not going to sit there on Facebook and yammer about their, you know, woes or the fact that, you know, we ran out and, uh, didn't have, uh, power for fifteen minutes, so it's got to be somebody's fault. Um, but anyway, so I, I just want to make sure that people are aware in the um, broad spectrum of Tenino, that there is an issue with our seniors and with the housing and affordable housing. And so if this is money that can stay within Tenino and not go someplace else, then it would be utilized and it would be a, a good thing if we could possibly do it. Well, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jody.
Okay, that brings us to Arch Commission.
All right, Mayor, we're still in the process of finalizing two other candidates. So I'm hoping by, uh, next month, we'll be able to present you a slate of five people for you to consider to be on the Arch Commission.
All right, thank you. Civil Service Commission, no report. Um, I had some potential applicants. I have, we've sent out some applications to them. Uh, I don't think we've had any return, so I'm gonna have to touch base with them again. I know that one of them was down at like a Pearl Jam concert for a week, so, which is freaking sweet. Keep going down, please, Jen. Okay, facade approval grant, Finance Planning Commission, Public Safety Committee, Chief of Police.
Aaron Council, thank you very much for the trip down memory lane. I thought I was at a commissioner meeting for a while, uh, when I signed in. Uh, the chief's recruitment, um, announcement has gone out to several internet sites. Wasp Big, AWC, I believe LinkedIn, uh, city website, uh, Public Safety Testing Police One, and Snail Mail, uh, announcement for the recruitment for the chief of police went to every law enforcement agency in Thurston County to include our tribal partners. I expect that will generate some, uh, interest. Elaboral posting for recruitment is, uh, has been sent out as well. We're creating a, uh, well, my goal is to create a ready pool, uh, of viable candidates that are all CJTC commissioned and trained, ready to go. Um, so we have something from which to pull at a moment's notice. It doesn't cost us anything. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I forwarded to you about an hour or so ago, uh, a copy of Thurston County District Court's, um, interlocal agreement or ILA between the cities of Yelm and Tomwater regarding services for District Court. Uh, they contract with District Court for, um, not only their trials, jury trials, a judge, a public defender and prosecution. But the reason, uh, I requested that and sent it to you, Mayor, is, uh, for our city to look at contracting with the county district court for jury trial only. Uh, currently, after talking with Rana and also talking with, uh, our public defender, I mean, our prosecuting attorney, uh, we severely lack jury services, uh, to afford, uh, people that are due justice in court. And so if somebody asks of a defendant, demands a jury trial, generally, we're, she is having to dismiss the case because we're, we don't have that set up, uh, in our county. And so, um, this would be a big step up for Tenino uh, and for, uh, victims, uh, of, of crimes in that we do not have in Tenino, we don't have the capability of room, sufficient room for, uh, voir dire of jurors or sequestering, keeping them separate. Uh, Thurston County is completely set up with ADA compliance and access, easy access, uh, for the public. What's really nice is they have IT services that are, uh, par excellence. So if there was a trial and we needed to have pictures, a video, uh, PowerPoint, whatever, they have that all set up as well. So we would not need to contract services, just my opinion. Uh, we wouldn't need to, to, uh, contract services for prosecution or defense attorneys. We have that in place. It would just be, uh, the juror, the jury, uh, and I'm not sure how the judge would work. Whether it be Tom Meyer or a judge, a district court judge. Uh, but you have that in your inbox, Mayor, uh, to take a look at. If you need anything, let me know. I'm happy to help out, but it's entirely, uh, in your court. Um, thank you for signing off on the Lexipol. Lexipol is a, is a national policy, uh, and, uh, law enforcement professional tool for policy and such. Um, but they also offer training for police officers. Uh, police officers are mandated to complete twenty-four hours of training every year. And it's not a suggestion, it is a requirement. And we are and have been compliant. However, through Lexipol, they offer, uh, ninety-minute, two-hour trainings, online video trainings uh, on hundreds of topics. So not only does it help us maintain our twenty-four hours, but then officers are getting exposed to training um, uh, in areas that we don't have the availability to send them to. And most trainings are, are not, they're all remote now. They're not, uh, they're actually not in, uh, in person. So this opens up the, uh, the pool and resources for officers to get training in areas they normally or typically would not have access, access to. And then, of course, you all heard, I'm sure, the assault first degree stabbing last Saturday evening, uh, with a twenty-three, twenty-three-year-old transient from, suspect from Olympia that stabbed a thirty-three-year-old male in Tenino. And, uh, the victim underwent surgery and was released, uh, later that night, Saturday evening. And to answer one of the questions that came up, uh, our fire district, uh, had an arrival time of a response time of about three to four minutes, which is not bad considering the time of night and the day of the week. Um, and when they got there, of course, our officer was on the scene as the call came out, which is very readily-
Not really good on all parts.
Oh, it really was, so Officer, Officer Aaron-
How quickly was Aaron there?
I'm sorry?
How quickly was our officer there?
He was driving by the church as the call was coming out, so it was immediate.
Under, yeah, that, that's amazing. The first aid was there within literally seconds.
Yes, he was administering first aid immediately. Suspect had fled. County came in, so deputies came in and, uh, cordoned off the scene and attempted to find the suspect. And what's really kind of cool is that, uh, Officer Lee not only was on the scene as the call came out, rendered first aid, uh, secured the, uh, the victim and, uh, AMR whisked him off to, uh, St. Peter's, Providence, St. Pete's. Then a little bit later, Officer Lee, uh, found the suspect and arrested him. And Officer Lee recovered the, uh, the motor transportation, a motorized scooter that the suspect had been utilizing to flee. Uh, so Aaron did, and boy, I tell you what, he really represented Tenino, uh, in, in his highest capacity. He did a great job. Um, and so I want to be sure that you, you know that. Um, and, uh, Fire District, uh, Twelve did an excellent job as well in helping him out. Do you have any questions or any comments?
No, just want to say thank you to you, Chief, Tenino Police Department, Officer Lee for, for all of that. And, and the Fire District, this is why I will always support you guys. Cause I think this is definitely needed in Tenino to stay here.
It's just one more reason that we need our own police department here in Tenino. It's great. Good job.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll pass the word on.
Okay, uh, good report. Uh, Director of Public Works, uh, not present. City Planner, Building Official, supposed to be meeting with him later this week. Uh, City Attorney Clerk-Treasure, Kaleigh, it is your turn.
Good evening, everyone. So, um, my report is that, um, the mayor and I and the department heads had a budget meeting yesterday to go over some figures. And I am also working on the budget still. Um, also to report, and it has to do with, um, line eight on the agenda or number eight, line one on the agenda. Um, I got a call today from Kateri Wimset and who is with Be That Prevention Coalition in regards to some signage to put in, well, basically anywhere where there are minorities present. Um, there, keep our kids healthy, no smoking, vaping signs. Um, thought by the playground equipment, ball field, we can get up to fifty signs. So it's however many signs we would like to put out. She also brought in some window clings for the buildings. Um, she also put me in touch by email with, um, Melissa Gonzalez. She said that she has the crew to get the signage up and the materials and that she is hoping to work with the city to get the signage installed. I do actually kind of have, it's kind of a small picture here. Let me see if my camera will work. I don't know if you can quite see that, but that is what it would look like. It would have the, the no smoking vaping sign and then a Be That sign underneath it, Be That Prevention Coalition. So I'm not sure if you guys can see, there's that one. And then there is the other one that she sent, and it would be mounted onto the pole. So again, she dropped off ten signs and the clings, but if we would like more and if this is something we want to do and put in place, again, ball field to go with the Thurston County ordinance that's been put in place. They just think it would be a good idea to get the information out there so people know not to do that in the public places where there are children present. And that is all I have.
All right, thank you, Kaleigh. Uh, there comes a mine. Uh, I worked, I think, ninety-six hours last week, so I wasn't, uh, I wasn't much of a mayor last week. And then, as Kaleigh mentioned, uh, we did have department head budget presentations just recently. Uh, went well, so we've got some figures to start plugging in. And then, uh, and then we start doing the, the budgeteering and, and, and start kind of doing the, the magic. Be that.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Mayor, before we give my Be That report, did, um, we went too fast on the, uh, Director of Public Works, Troy, did he get the message I sent you about Sussex and Reynolds? About the street sign up, from the street sign up of Reynolds? Okay, all right. So my, uh, report is only, uh, for the Be That, they have a drop, a medicine takeback event on, uh, October twenty-third, which is a Saturday, between ten AM and two PM at the, uh, Tenino Police Department.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Lawton. Uh, CIP, Solid Waste Advisory Board, Steady, George, that is you.
You beautied yourself.
And you hear me now.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Our next steady meeting will be the third Friday of October, and we're gonna actually talk about housing in that meeting as well. So be interesting to see, uh, what is talked about at that time. I also want to give a shout out, Mayor, to the Tenino Garden Club, who helped the Tenino Chamber and Tenino Arts put up corn stocks on all the historic light bulbs downtown and some lights as well. We'll be putting corn stocks at all the entrance to the sound, town. And they'll also be putting up some scarecrows that entrances to town. So hopefully everybody in the mood for a great fall.
All right, thank you, George. Um, keep going down there, Jennifer. Uh, Tenino School Board, Rachel's not present, uh, TRPC, that was Cutter, TPB.
Uh, next month.
All right, public comment period number two. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to provide public comment, now's your opportunity to do so. You'll be given three minutes. State your name and address.
Dan Fisher, I live in Chehalis actually, but I'm the editor of the Tenino Independent.
Welcome, Dan.
I actually covered the, uh, school board meeting last night. And, uh, they selected a, uh, a new, um, board member to replace Casey Shiwi, who's resigned. Uh, and Rachel Davidson was one of the two candidates. The, uh, current director of the Depot Museum, what is her name, John?
Oh, good golly, Wayne, what's her name? I can't think of her right now.
Jessica Rush.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, uh, she was, after both she and, uh, and Rachel were interviewed, they went into executive session and came back and, uh, and, uh, voted, uh, for Jessica to, uh, take Casey Shiwi's place.
Okay. That is a great choice. Two great choices. So they're pretty lucky. Uh, that brings us to announcements. If there's anyone that would like to provide an announcement before John O'Callahan starts giving his, please do so at this time.
Have a good night, guys. See ya.
See you, Jason.
All right. Any further, any announcements?
Yes, my turn.